Okay, good morning. Like to call the meeting, uh, the committee of the whole meeting for January twenty eighth, uh, to order. And with the land acknowledgement, we acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight. Traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Medes, and Inuits peoples' connection to these lands. Their history, language, and culture. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And the councillor, councillor, uh, Chamsik, uh, you approve the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Councillor Kapitanik, are you on board here? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I was just on the other side of the room. Aye.
Okay. So it's carried. Approval of the minutes from November nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll do that.
Councillor Pommall has proved the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Mister Gerlock, you approved? Okay, so nine and oh, motion carried. So that's that. We have two presentations, closed sessions, uh, one at ten AM, the other one at one PM. So we'll move on to, uh, round table discussions. Uh, number five, five point one, action item list. Is there any? Is there any discussion that we need to have on the action items? CEO Beck?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, just thought we'd point out that, um, after reviewing it a bit more, we've got a few things that actually are are completed that we'd like to bring attention to on page ten under CC two, four. Four, three, nine. That one's been done, obviously. On page eleven. Um, CC two, four, five, four, five. Uh, that one's been done. Uh, CC two, four, five, four, seven has been done. Um, and CC two, four, five, five, four has been completed. Um, on page twelve. Uh, CC two, four, five, eight, three, uh, that's completed. Um, CC, uh, sorry, page thirteen, Mister Chairman, CC twenty five, thirty. Um, is completed. So we just had a few more refinements.
Oh, it's perfect. It's good to see getting some of these off the off the list. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns regarding this, uh? The action item list? No discussion? So, uh, do we need to recommend a motion to county council to, uh, Wilson is completed or or not? Or they just come off the books?
Mister Chairman, I I propose that we would just mark them as being off the list and
Okay.
We don't even need a motion to accept for information if you don't want to, servants.
Perfect. We can take them off the list. That's that's the, that's the main thing. So. Okay, so, uh, everybody's okay with that? Understanding that this will be removed from the action item list. So. Which is good. Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, CAO update. Any discussion regarding the CAO update? Seeing none, I see the, uh, the island lake, uh, waterline is moving along and in progress. So that's a great thing to see. It's, uh, it's, uh, gonna be great when we can start getting, moving on with some meetings and that. So thank you very much with that. Okay, so from there, we'll, we'll, if there's no discussion on that, we'll move on to department updates. Infrastructure Services Department, under five point three. Any discussion regarding that? Somebody? Oh. Reeve Hall?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, let everyone know I'd received quite a few compliments here, um, last week with regards to the grading areas. And, uh, I just want to put a shout out. Thank you so much. It's really nice to have those compliments come in. And I hopefully they were all shared and, um, great work. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councillor Anderson, you got a question?
Thank you. Underwater, um, it talks about a potential main break in wandering river. And then it says that administration is investigating a new software which would give them, uh, more ability to monitor the distribution system and alert customers if there is a leak. I was wondering if admin could elaborate a little bit more on how that would work and the benefits of it.
Yeah, Miss Chairman, I'm somewhat familiar with it. The subject matter expert isn't here today, but, um, it's, uh, software that it monitors, um, usage in individual accounts. And if if it notices something out of the ordinary, it triggers, it sends a message to us and says, you should go look at this. And so there's a lot of our system that doesn't have a lot of automation that really could be modernized, um. And, yeah, we'd love to get into discussion of that. We've had a couple of issues recently at one of the truck fields that's kind of highlighted some priorities that we think we should be looking at, but we'd bring that back to council as a discussion item. Some of them could be accomplished with a current budget, some of them maybe not. But, uh, that's the software that it's really to, it watches everything and it it highlights abnormalities.
Okay, go ahead.
I just think it's great that we're highlighting that. Um, such a exciting opportunity that would really help our rate pairs.
Yeah, actually, I had that one marked down on my list too, to to discuss because I was just wondering, it's kind of like a SCADA system, right? That that, uh, and the Water Commission monitors the the reservoirs itself. So so would this system actually take it down to a smaller size and 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 look at each account?
Well, you know, I'd have to speak with the manager and our operator to find out what they were thinking. Um, it has the ability to, whether or not our meter system, it can be tied in that way. I'm not sure. So it's certainly a way to narrow down problems though, and and, uh, way quicker than we have, uh, have the ability today. Because if we have a a lake like leak like this today, it's really our our operator and the residents were relying on them to spot water rising from the ground if there's a problem. In this instance, there was none because it wasn't coming out of a leak. It was in someone's home. And so it took us a long time to find that. The person had to come home, basically.
Yeah, you betcha. And I know like the Water Commission has has, uh, uh, given the heads up to Athabasca County just regarding when the reservoir starts dropping fast. It's like, okay, what's going on? Could be a water leak, could be something else. So, no, that's very good. That's very good, uh, information. Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody want to talk about anything else? I see we're having, my one question is, I see we're having a little issue down in Rochester with the sewer system and and overloading the pumps. And I know the town of Athabasca has the same thing going on all the time. And I I think they reach out to people and and, uh, and 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 give them some notice by by throwing it in the paper and throwing it. I don't know if they've sent out letters to all the, all the residents or not, but is there any thought of maybe possibly doing that, throwing a letter out to the residents saying, don't don't flush certain items down, uh, down their sewer system, please?
Miss Chairman, we absolutely could. That's pretty standard these days in in, uh, urban areas, um. It's probably a good proactive measure for us to be doing for our lagoon systems too, as well.
Okay, so we don't need nothing to happen there. Administration will do that. Right on. Perfect. Thank you very much. And I think other than that, that, uh, yes, I, uh, I I have the same thoughts on the grading and everything that's went on and and last week there, it sounds like there was a heck of a wind around here. So roads were cleaned up and that. So very good, uh, good job by by everybody. So. So any other questions for Infrastructure Services? Oh, one more.
Not a, not a question so much as, um, just to say again, these reports take a lot of work and effort to to bring forward. So thank you so much for doing that. It's great information to have and to share with the public when they're asking what's going on. So thank you very much for the thorough report and all of the information that's within it. I know it takes a lot of work. So it's very much appreciated.
Perfect. So moving on to Corporate Services Department update. Any questions regarding Corporate Services? Anything online? Seeing none? Great job. And great, oh, here's one. Councillor Anderson?
Under Communications, it says scouted Baptiste Drive and developed letter and voting material for residents on that road. Just kind of wondering, what are they voting on? Is that for the name change or?
Um, Mister Chair and members of the committee, this is about the change of the road name to pack, I think it was Pack Drive was the recommendation or this, yeah, from the resident.
When, when is that survey supposed to come back in by?
I think we gave it till February twentieth somewhere in there. We gave, we gave a full month.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Councillor Hall?
Page twenty four, you outline the accounts receivable balances. And so I have two questions, um, for administration. One, are we still providing credit to customers with balances greater than sixty days? And secondly, what activities are being undertaken to collect the items greater than sixty days?
Mister Chair and members of council, yes, we still are. It's still status quo. In fact, um, the finance, the CFO and the utilities, uh, clerk and I are meeting tomorrow to talk about some of these outstanding accounts, taking a look at our policy with respect to writing off and making recommendations for writing off some of these accounts, some of the smaller ones that had been ongoing for several years. And also now finally, um, starting the process of collections.
So we're still offering new credit to people who are more than sixty days delinquent, just so that I'm clear?
To my knowledge, yes.
Any question, sorry about that. Any, uh, questions regarding the the, any services report, Protective Services?
Uh, maybe just to recap on what we missed after uh, councillor Hall made his last comment about still giving credit. We heard nothing uh, for probably about a minute there. And I see councillor Kapitanic is agreeing with me. So anything that we missed to be repeated, please?
Oh, you mean, you mean the whole end of the conversation with the director or what?
Yes, please.
Sorry about that. I did have my mic on. Um, we are continuing on with, uh, providing credit to customers who are still have outstanding accounts. And we are looking at, um, uh, implementing our policy to write off some of the accounts and bringing that back to council for consideration. And, uh, lastly, um, yeah, we are looking into implementing the collections process.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I'm, uh, glad to hear we're not uh, doing anything too rash yet. And thank you for that update. Appreciate.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, yeah, we apologize for the mics here. We have fun with them. But, uh, okay, uh, moving on to the Director of Community and Protective Services Report. So any discussion regarding that? Councillor Anderson?
Um, under land management, it says that they're working on multiple files, including road closures. I was just wondering if it'd be possible maybe in the next report to get a list of which road closures they're working on or are outstanding or ongoing or that kind of thing, just so we know the status of those. Cause I know they take a long time to complete. So just if we knew at some point.
Is.
Miss Chairman, that'd be no problem. Um, I know of four for sure that, uh, our land management coordinator is working on. Um, and they've just been backed up for about a year with no one handling them. So, uh, one is coming very quickly to you. So, um, but she's working on about three others currently right now. So, uh, and about twenty-five other files. So you'll be seeing a lot of her in the next few months.
It'll be good to get, uh, get them off the books and and get them moving along. Some of them are pretty pretty, uh, got lots of information. Some of them are just straight standard and that that's, uh, it's great to see them being done. Uh, any other, Councillor Hall?
To administration, um, regarding community transportation, I guess I'm looking at the stats and thinking about how we share costs on that file. And, um, wondering how much work it would be because we we know the different trips have different cost points based on distance. Do we keep track of the mileage per trip? And how much effort would it take to give us a breakdown of the distribution of the cost of operating that program based on each municipality? Cause I I noticed, you know, one partner that pays a relatively small part of the whole fee uses two thirds of their rides.
Yep, um. Mister Chairman, yeah, absolutely. I think that, um, uh, that's certainly doable. Um, that's certainly something that probably should be referred to that committee to have some discussion about. Moving forwards, I don't know if we do it currently. So looking backwards, I don't actually know that. But moving forward, say start of the month, saying every trip, report the mileage to that should be easy. It's, we're already reporting the time and everything else. So I don't see that as being a big thing moving forward. Moving backward, I'd, I'd have to ask. That's all.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Oh.
Thanks. Um, just so that council is aware, um, with regards to how we, um, different requisitions go out to the different users of the town and the village. It's based on per capita. Which is, uh, I think the budget is around nineteen forty-four, um, per capita is how it's currently, um, looked at. Um, I know it's a conversation that a lot of people, uh, wonder about. Um, mileage is something, of course, as mentioned in here that that's tracked. Again, I don't understand either if it's per trip. Um, however, um, the model that's being used, um, seems to be the the bit best fit that we have had several conversations about over the years. So just a heads up there.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding Detective Services or anything like that? Rashit? Running lots, uh, FCS looks good. Okay, well, looks good and everything. So, uh, oh, Reeve, Reeve.
Thanks. Um, and and again, I just really want to highlight, these reports are amazing. Um, the work that goes into them is phenomenal. And, uh, again, it's it's greatly appreciated to see all of the things that our administration are doing that, uh, serves this community and, um, it's huge. And I I do hope that more people have a have a chance to have a look at the Committee of the Whole agendas to to really see what's going on. I know I share this with uh, residents on a regular and and, um, they're really happy to see everything that's going on. So thanks again.
I've, uh, I've had a few comments regarding, out in Division Eight regarding, uh, seeing our uh, peace officers out in that area quite a bit, just patrolling and that and and, uh, and and good comments. It's 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 not bad comments. So so that's one good thing. At least they're being seen out there and, uh, people are noticing them and and everything. So great job on that end. Gotcha. So. Anything else? Nothing online. So, uh, uh, so I guess we will, uh, accept the reports. Thank you very much for all the reports and everything. And, uh, still about ten minutes before our our first presentation. So we can probably move on to uh, six point one. Oh, five point four? Oh, yeah, councillor updates. Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, okay, let's move on to councillor updates. So, starting with councillor updates, let's, uh, let's go with, uh, Mister Gerlock. We may as well pick on you first.
Again, I've, uh, received a number of comments on, uh, on the grading and the improvement in the in the grading in the area. Uh, people have been quite satisfied with it. They're also quite happy with the weather that we've been getting. I don't know that we can take credit for that. But, uh, other than that, there's not too much to report.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll move on to Reeve Hallen.
Thanks so much. Um, it's busy as usual. Uh, committee work is now fired right back up in the new year. So busy with that, busy with trails, both non-motorized and motorized trails. Um, which is, I I just absolutely adore that, uh, type of work. So I've been enjoying that. Um, there's been a few C- CEO and CAO meetings, uh, with the one with the town. We had a meeting, Deputy Reeve and I had a meeting with the AGU president. Um, met with the auditor, those types of things that are happening. Um, December, the county Christmas, uh, party was fantastic. The, uh, portion that I attended, um, for the dinner and the comedian was excellent. It was well done. Uh, everyone seemed to be having a really great time. So thank you very much for doing that. Um, continuing, of course, with counts payable reviews, agenda reviews, document signings, those regular things. Also attended, uh, the Festival of Lessons and Carols, um, which was absolutely amazing. One of my favorite parts of that was the handbells. I just loved it. It was a wonderful evening and a great way to to, um, put the Christmas spirit in the air. Um, I also had the honor of, uh, presenting, uh, Ms. Solon Senick, her ninetieth birthday plaque from the county. Um, this lady is, um, I found just to be an absolute delight to visit with. She continues to live a life of adventure, I see, and she, it's filled with love and laughter from family and friends. And, uh, Athabasca County is honored, obviously, to be a part of her journey. I was also honored and very privileged to attend, uh, pipe ceremony, uh, and feast at Portage College. Um, and that's with regards to their, um, search for a president, a new president that's up and coming. And, um, that was an amazing, uh, most powerful, uh, cer- ceremony. And, um, it was such a privilege to be, uh, invited. Um, and as of course, uh, constantly having conversations with residents, uh, hearing some complaints, but mainly compliments. So, um, I'll stick with the compliments and and, uh, the complaints, uh, aspect are of course being remedied, but, uh, the compliments were were vast. So I really appreciate hearing those and and, uh, that, see, hearing that people are happy. And so that's, that's a good thing. And and that's a compliments to administration for making all of that happen. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, yeah, I I may as well chime in here now, uh, everything's been going good on and and, yeah, uh, the uh, Public Works has been taking very good care of of a lot of the roads and and that out there. Graders are out giving her. So other than that, uh, like, uh, Reeve Hallen said, met with the university and had a great Christmas. Sorry I missed the Christmas party, but couldn't make it, but I heard it was went over good. And, uh, yeah, it's, uh, looking forward to twenty twenty-five, continuing on. So thank you very much.
Um, not much going on. I had a couple of multiplex meetings. I'll let councillor Anderson speak to those though. Um, and the next Alberta Hub meeting isn't till February. So, and then the biggest thing in Division Nine right now, the Athabasca Bridge has a thirty-ton weight limit on it. So that's great. And, yeah.
Yeah, that's hard. Um, December, uh, most committees kind of, uh, go to a little bit of quiet, uh. Uh, we had a few community dinners, Christmas concerts, those types of things at more impressive dinners, um, for the celebrating rural women's conference. Uh, things have really started to come together. Uh, catering bids and nominations are out of close. Now just ironing out some of the fine details. As for libraries, Athabasca, Boyle, and County Libraries Annual Reportings are coming up. Of course, updating policies, um, working on those types of things. And ASB Conference was just last week there. I have a report coming out, uh, probably for next agenda. Other than that, I've been stopped, phoned, and even chased down by and complimented uh, for the fine work that their operators are doing, or grader operators, of course. And I'd just like to say hats off to Public Works for all the hard work they do.
Thank you. Councillor Hall?
Um, the bulk of my updates are contained in the reports I submit and are with council.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson?
I'm hoping to have some updates on ARMS and the Pembina Zone in the next council agenda, but ARMS has really been focusing on the capital budget funding, uh, concerns and strategic planning lately and dealing with some patron misconduct items. Uh, Pembina Zone, we had our meeting January twentieth, uh, which was well attended. And I was reelected as president and chair of the zone. So that'll be great for a couple more years. And RMA committees are just very busy trying to prepare things for the spring RMA convention. So I've been very busy with all things committee work. And then many community groups have their AGMs through January, February, March. So trying to keep track of how many there are and get to as many as I can.
Congratulations on being reelected there as Chair of the Pembina Zone. You do a great job. Thank you. Councillor Kapitanik?
Good morning. Um, yes, uh, through December, I guess we're going back to, uh, there was many a Christmas party to attend from, uh, as Uh, as in within the county and the town, um the county Christmas party was really fun and I really enjoyed how um. They made it a great fundraiser for both, I believe it was the food bank and scars, so. Um, just a really great job to all of those organizing and having the grads help was really nice. Um, the New Pine Creek had their uh Ukrainian New Year's Eve. That was a successful event. Um, there was a lunch. Or sorry, I had lunch with the rate pair just recently um and addressed some concerns about um. Things that were spoken at at our last council meeting, and there is a group of uh rate pairs getting together that are gonna wanna come and speak to council, which is exciting. The people are getting involved and actually just uh really exciting that people are. Noticing what we're doing and and watching our meetings, which is. I always, you know, thought people were, but I never really heard that they were. So that's pretty cool. Um, many uh. I had a, oh, sorry, we had multiplex meetings. Um, Counselor Anderson uh spoke to those. I did attend the Pembina Zone as well, and I did want to congratulate Counselor Anderson. Um, she does hold the room and I also um. Would like to note that she is quick to have the microphone at anyone that wants to speak, uh always uh taking. Time to look around and and not make people have to wait too long, and that was noted, and she's very observant, so good job. I mean, not noted just by me, but by people in the entire Pembina Zone. Uh, meeting, um. Uh, Collington Community Hall had their first meeting of the year and um. We finally got M C S net free internet, which is really cool. They had uh rescheduled their install. Many times over the last six months, and I don't think it had any detriment to them, which is very busy. Uh, Collington Hall had been using. The internet that was is put in by um one of our renters. And it just uh, you know. I don't know if it was like appropriate for the public to have the password for that, so it's really good to see that we have um. Open public wifi that's free, that is um not connected to any other renter or anybody else. And just wanna thank M C S Net for continuing to do that for community halls um all over. The place. I know that there are a few in our county, I'm sure, that have that. And also thank you to Counselor Wallack for bringing that to my attention many months ago that I didn't know that they did that. And I think that's about all I've got for today.
Thank you. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Many of the things have been said. I'll talk about what is different. Uh, though I do receive many compliments, I still get frequent complaints about the Plamon and Connector. Even after grading, it's very quick to deteriorate to washboard and and very hard driving conditions. Um, that wind has caused a lot of ice in the area up here. I know we're kind of a different ecosystem than. Than some of you down south, but aside from that, compliments to administration and all the crews for everything they've done. Very quick and simple today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So thank you for the reports and everything and we're we're uh. Hoping on just about ten o'clock here to. We have our first presentation and the first presentation is uh in closed session, so we need a motion to go into clothes. Motion by uh. By uh uh. My counselor Wallack to go into closed session. And uh, all in favor? Counselor Kapitanik? Okay, okay, so we're going into close. Thank you very much. Okay, well, I guess we'll uh reconvene the meeting here. After lunch and we came uh out of closed at twelve oh five. And we're reconvening at uh twelve thirty-one. So we'll move on to the next uh item on the agenda. Which I think is six point one. Six point one property tax receivables. I guess. Do we, do we wanna have any discussion on this or?
This chairman, um just, Miss Ampli is describing.
Oh.
Grace, the the brains in the organization to. In case there's any questions.
Okay. We'll wait a few minutes until. Thanks, Grace. So is there any questions to administration regarding the? Item six point one. Property tax receivables up to December thirty-first. Counselor Hall.
So across the province, we hear lots about the uh oil and gas. Companies that aren't paying their share and um so I've got thirty roles in your report that are inactive or. Uh, so the forty-four that are active, I assume that means there's forty-four active wells.
Sorry, um active assessments, uh maybe not necessarily in operation, but the D I. Pardon the industrial assessor still has them assessed. They may be small amounts, but they are technically still assessed.
So that as are we taking any action to go after these oil and gas companies that are leaving us holding? Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of debt? Like, is there anything the county can do that you need council support for?
Um, Mister Chairman, we're taking everything that we can under legislation, but as. Councils aware, every couple of years, they kind of play with that a little bit and sometimes they free it up so that we do have some avenues and then. Um, and then sometimes they rein it back in. And um, so we take every option that we can. Uh, the latest one is um. Not really an option. It's uh, it was the tax holiday that they gave them instead of to try to get new wells. Going and so that holiday is off and I'm taking that opportunity to inform council. Uh publicly that that holiday is off this year, so we should see some revenue, but for inactive and um other ones that are rather. Not paying our. Options are still pretty limited by legislation.
And then the the second question is, I appreciate the the chart and how that's laid out. I think that's really informative and and uh good information. Um, just because we're on the subject of taxes and did we recently have a tax auction? Did that go through or was there an arrangement?
No, um. Mister Chairman, that was uh put over. We had it scheduled for the thirtieth and um. We reached a tax agreement with that landowner shortly before the tax auction.
On the topic of tax agreements, it says that there's six tax agreement payment plans valued at six hundred and four thousand dollars in place. Is administration confident that those payments will be made or is there? A high likelihood of some default in there?
Uh, Chairman, uh, there is one account that is very substantial. Uh, we just reached into attached tax agreement with um legislation. We have to take it. Over three years, so that's something we have to offer. Um, we're hoping it'll be resolved before then. Because we're not a bank. When you're looking at twelve percent penalty on May first, that's pretty substantial. So our hopes are that they are able to come to some uh resolution.
Okay, any any other questions regarding this? This uh report. Seeing none. Okay. Thank you very much for the great report that you that we had in here and. Pardon me?
I I would uh make a motion to receive it for information and direct admin to provide us an update in April of twenty twenty.
April of twenty twenty-five?
Yep.
And uh, recommended to council. Uh, to receive for information and provide a support to uh. In April of twenty twenty-five.
I would make the motion to receive the report for information and direct administration to provide an update to this committee for April of twenty twenty-five.
Um, and if I may, we have to recommend to council um by the procedural bylaws. We don't have power to pass.
Okay.
I'm just looking for them to bring back to this committee and I think, you know, we can. Need to think about how much work we create for.
Well, oh, go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
Then I'll like to make an amendment to uh Mister Hall's motion to recommend to county council to receive this information. And bring an update back to committee of the whole in April twenty twenty-five.
Receive report. More information. And you, can you uh say that again?
Recommend to county council to receive this report for information and to bring an update to committee of the whole. In April of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so uh. We have an amendment. On the floor right now, so I guess we'll vote on an amendment. To recommend the council to receive this report for information and to bring. An update to the committee of the whole in April of twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, post. Five to three, motion carried. Okay. Next one, uh six point two, moving on to six point two. Dust control program.
You still have a motion on the floor, Chair?
Oh, which is voted on amendment, okay. Well, then we'll go with the motion, motion by uh Counselor Hall. To receive the report for for information and to bring update to uh community of the whole. In April of twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Um, sorry, point of order, Mister Chair, with all respect, uh as the amendment passed, should it not read? Uh, as the amendment did in order for the main motion to pass?
I want to recommend to council to receive the report for information and to bring an update to. The the next, to the committee of the whole in April of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Passed, seven, seven and oh.
Eight.
Eight and oh. Eight and oh, sorry for that. Okay, moving on to the next item, six point two. Dust control program. So, um, I guess we're gonna have a discussion regarding um. Resolution C C twenty-four, five thirty-eight and then. January thirtieth, passing following motion, resolution C C twenty-four dash forty-three. So, I guess who wants to start with that?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, we. Assembled what we could find. Unfortunately, a lot of administration wasn't here for some of this discussion of the policy. Um, I think I joined the county and um and we kind of, I think it went to one policy review committee and then. One committee of the whole and one council meeting for adoption, but. It had been discussed before that time at policy review committees. And we, I couldn't get the flavor of what was discussed at those meetings, so um. We've attached the the previous policy. It was clear that campgrounds were involved and were invoiced and then the new one where. They're not really mentioned, big, big chunks of that policy are gone and I can only report on. How it was implemented this past year, that policy and those previous campgrounds that had been invoiced. Were no longer invoiced and there were. Let me say it's hard for me to tell, but it's either eleven or twelve. That had been invoiced before and I can't. See that they all were invoiced this year.
Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, through the Chair to Administration. How does that work for, let's say, trucking companies that get a road use agreement? Do they pay any dust control?
Well, Mister Chairman, um. There were um, let's see, seven different accounts. Before the policy change for oil field and hauling all roads and they were intact, so no change.
So they were billed, if I may, Mister Chair, were billed and continue to be billed?
Mister Chairman, correct. So no, no change. Um, it it looks to me like. Um, infrastructure only. Really didn't invoice, send out invoices for the campground recreational. Uh, R V park properties, that's it. The other ones that were previously annual, state annual.
Okay, does that satisfy you, Counselor Cromwell?
It does, but what I'm getting at is we've talked a lot in this room. About equality and being fair and making sure that everyone is treated the same. So when we have. A a local trucker that has to go down a rain road maybe five times in a day. Uh, and has to pay dust control, but we have. Uh, and has to pay dust control, but we have campgrounds that have. Let's see, ten vehicles going by twice a day that do not or. Uh, other local. As in county operated. Small truck companies that that have to come up and down. I I think we need to look at this in the in the broader picture and make sure that. Either we're we're billing all that should be billed or we're not billing. And we can't be picking on, hey, you drive. This truck, you're gonna get billed, but this group that doesn't drive that larger truck but has ten times the volume is being billed. I I think there's a little bit of work that needs to be done here. Um, I know we recently passed our dust control policy, but. I do not think it is adequate, fair or equitable for anybody right now.
No, we we passed that here a little while ago, but uh, you know, we can, we can discuss it, uh, revolve.
Thank you, um, I guess. My question is basically surrounding around the new policy and the uh clause that says any discrepancy, dispute or concern. Can be brought to the Director of Infrastructure Services for resolution or escalation to the C A O. Or County Council. Are you able to let us know during since this policy has been implemented if there has been? Anything brought forward to the infrastructure services that may have changed what the original outcome was that they were looking for? So basically, you know, if we had anybody come where they said, you know, this needs to have dust control. Um, they've made their case and it was implemented that way.
Chairman, I'm unaware of where uh maybe a dispute had been lodged with the director and. Some resolution was found, I uh other than the one that that did escalate into um. Uh, the Richards attended council, that's really the only one that I'm. That I'm aware of, I'm trying to think back. I can't can't recall being advised of any other complaints that that um. That were lodged with the director at the time.
Go ahead. Thank you, um, and I don't recall and I'm hoping someone can refresh my memory. Um, but the definition of consistent traffic um that we have, I believe, is is it twenty vehicles? Like going by, I was just curious, I can't remember exactly the the is it twenty?
Uh, microphone, please, ma'am.
Yeah, sorry, uh, consistent traffic will be defined as greater than twenty working days with ten or more traffic movements per day. Related to commercial activity or at the director of the constructor services to strike discretion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we took that out, so we don't have anything in the new policy. Then that relates to what we consider as consistent traffic, that's correct? Cause I couldn't find it either. Okay, so I I have to agree um as well with um Counselor Cromwell's um wording. Um, that he mentioned here today that. I believe we need to do a little bit more work as well on the dust control program uh policy um. That would um make it a little more clear as to what needs to happen in in certain cases um. That we've, that we come across, um, exactly that with commercial traffic. Um, the only other thing that I did notice and should mention and and I'll put a um motion forward is. Relating to policy thirty four oh five or what is our new policy number, pardon me? Uh, yeah, thirty four oh five, that we have another dust control policy thirty four oh nine. Um, so it's just needs to have an update there, so um. When we're finished the discussion, I'll just recommend to council to update policy thirty four oh nine in pursuant to policy thirty four oh five. There's no big changes, there's no, um, but it would go to council for discussion. Just that it refers to thirty four oh six and which has been rescinded.
Okay, so. On that note, uh, Counselor.
We talked extensively at a multitude of meetings. About the desk control policy and the way we wanted to amend it and the direction we wanted to go. And I stand behind the changes that we made. And the only one that I would consider really looking at is that we limited. Each applicant to one two hundred meter section. And I would consider amending that so that whatever they want to pay for. They could pay for two or three sections if they so desire, but I. Other than that, I stand behind not. Um, requiring all of our campgrounds to pay for the dust control. I think it was a measure that we intentionally put in place. As a way to um. Encourage that kind of economic development and support those small businesses, because that's what they are, they're small businesses and we had put that in place.
I remember when we when we took this off, a lot of it, a lot of it was was due to the fact that. These campgrounds were were laid out in a bunch of different areas. And some of these campgrounds actually have many different roadways to get into them. And so, you know, one person would be complaining because they they get a lot of a lot of vehicles going past their place. This way and some that way and and it just got too convoluted, so it's it's. I think that's why the reason that we took that off. Under the uh road use agreements, uh, dust control is is covered underneath that where. If a if a trucking company or or log haul or or gravel haul, doesn't matter what kind of haul. If they're deemed that they need a road use agreement, it's up to them to uh. To make sure that they have dust control, whether it's by by water truck or or if they want to spray calcium, that's that's their. Point of view, but uh. Think that's a lot of the reason why we we took that off of the, I could never really understand the campground thing anyway. Just due to the fact that there's so many different ways in on these roadways. Just happens that this one's actually on a on a dead end chunk of road. Uh, uh, I don't think we've heard, have we heard any any uh? Uh, any reason. From other campgrounds regarding uh or from other people that said that they should be getting free dust control too or? Like, or is there just one person so far? There's just one person so far that's complaining about not having their dust control paid for?
Mister Chairman, I can only report on what I've heard and I really haven't heard of anything other than the one, so. The council might be aware of more complaints than I am, you might hear it directly. Some reason it's not making its way to my office, that's all.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I guess uh. What do we want to do with this? Do we wanna? Somebody wanna, we wanna just?
Uh, just following Council Anderson's recommendation to add. The ability for people to purchase extra applications on there as well.
Across the county, yeah, for every dust control, if you want to purchase extra, extra, extra uh. Um, calcium distance and it's paid at full expense. This is where we got into trouble with it before, all of a sudden, then all of a sudden, we're we're looking at neighbors, we're 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 mad at other neighbors because they. They, they, they were able to to buy extra dust control and then it ended up. Going past their place and they weren't happy with it. And and that was another reason that this didn't come through, so. That's the point to ponder right there also, that that was changed, that was taken off, that way we didn't get into the. Into the neighbor disputes between the 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 two of them, so.
Thank you so much. I know um in in my division, I have had. Uh, some people come forward with regards to a commercial entity that um. Goes past their homes, um, that they didn't prior to that entity being there, that they didn't have an issue with the dust. Um, from the roads and now, of course, with the commercial. Um, entity that's there, it has increased, um, so they do do have, you know, their own. Concern with regards to that, um, and we don't have any avenue in this policy for people other than. Um, the one clause, any discrepancy, dispute or concern. Can be brought forward to the Director of Infrastructure Services was which what. I passed along to those residents, what happened with that, I don't know, um. The fact that we have that clause, I I'm glad to see it, um, and of course, people have the right to to um. To go there, um, but I do how I do struggle when a commercial entity does change. The environment uh around what people are used to, um, for me. That needs to be addressed, and so I'm not crazy personally about how this policy reads and leaves that portion out. Um, so I don't know where we go here today, um, but I definitely think that there is more work that could be done.
So would you want the policy amended to add that in?
Well, we did used to have, you know, it was very specific, the consistent traffic uh definition. Um, that would aid anyone contacting infrastructure services, they don't have any. Thing to go through now, they're they're basically saying, well, you have a complaint, but I don't have any parameters to work with to help you. Because we've removed it from the policy, so it becomes their discrepancy um to deal with it. And so that's where when we when we remove parameters. And push things back to administration to make decisions, it makes it pretty difficult for them.
So in the old policy, where was that?
Page forty nine. Under guidelines, um, number three.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, Mister Cromwell there, um, I had the microphone off, but page forty nine, uh, guidelines, number three. Where it mentioned consistent traffic will be defined as greater than twenty working days with ten or more traffic movements per day related to commercial activity. Or at the Director of Infrastructure Services discretion. Um, and it also mentions it discusses commercial operators as well within these guidelines, but. When, like I say, when we remove that from the policy, it gives, it it doesn't give. Um, a good guide to administration to go by. It makes it more difficult for them, that's just my personal opinion and administration can let me know if that's, you know, makes it more difficult or not.
Counselor Walk.
I think we have to be careful with that because what if a new subdivision comes up and there's twenty new houses built in an area? Is that gonna go to the subdivision for to put calcium down? Like, there's a lot of nuances in this and we can't, we can't do everything for everybody. And we can't blame everything on everybody else, um, we live in the country, there's gravel roads.
No, absolutely, and if if I may follow up, that's why this was very specific about. Commercial movement and so, you know, it had to be defined as. Commercial, um, that is can be done through traffic count and and understanding where people are coming and going. Uh, whether it's residential or if it's actually coming and going from that particular commercial venture, it it would, for me, it would be easily defined.
Yeah, I guess it's got commercial activity in there. Okay, so, also at all.
We we spent a lot of time talking about this. And we made a choice at the time, I think, not to penalize commercial operations, they already pay a higher tax rate. And, you know, I think we have to also ask, do we want to be business and development friendly or not, and I, I don't think that it's. Reasonable to to pick on, to single out a single industry for one one thing. And also, um, road use agreements. It seems to be a more temporary in nature, they're related to a specific thing that's happening, whether it's a. Oil well, it's being drilled or a log haul. So they're, they don't necessarily result in a, in a uh. The tax, tax growth, growth or assessment growth at the end of the line, they're. They're about the use of the road by industry, and so I I think comparing them isn't reasonable, the the road use agreement is making sure they don't wreck the road. Making sure they don't irritate all the neighbors. And you know, I think we also have to recognize that in a prosperous and growing economy, things. Change, we see development down the road and. We see subdivisions that get built and more cars that come as mentioned by a colleague, so I, I think, um, you know, I'm. I I I appreciate the idea to add um the ability to purchase an extra application at full rate. Cause sometimes maybe two hundred meters isn't enough based on the layout of your geography or prevailing winds. But I guess I would want to caution us about. To use a tired phrase, rethrashing old straw again and again, like, we've dealt with this and tweaking it, but. I, it just seems so unproductive to go right back to the drawing board and, you know. This is on our agenda because we had a delegation and. Let's remember that in that delegation, we heard that they the delegate attended because they wanted someone else to pay for the dust control. Yet, previous to the commercial operator, dust control was purchased independently and. Like ultimately, the road was dusty enough that dust control was required prior to the commercial venture. So it really makes me wonder what's what's changed. Um, I I don't, I think we have so many. Things we need to work on, I just worry about us getting distracted by redoing. What is, in my opinion, essentially fairly good policy that we've already built. So with the exception of tweaking it to allow extra purchases, I don't have any support for doing anything else with this policy.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. The territory administration, can we confirm the cost of dust control? Um, just page fifty two and fifty seven of our agenda package are both. Apparently on thirty four oh six, but they have different prices, so just while we're talking. About the topic, can we confirm the price, please?
Mister Chairman, um, well, based on reading the policy, just seeing the issue so much this year. It's my understanding that al- almost all of the applications were two hundred dollars plus G S D. So two hundred and ten, I think. Could be wrong. I think that's correct.
I thought we bumped the rate on that.
We we, we actually dropped the rate on the dust control, the rate was dropped to uh two hundred. Right, it was just the cost of the.
Right, and then it worked out if you missed the deadline, that's what it was, if you missed the deadline and paid the penalty. You still weren't really paying more than you would have paid the year before.
So what it was, was fifty percent of only the. Cost of the calcium application basically, but none of the other costs, not the grader, that was all removed by council.
Right.
So it really reduced it a lot.
Gotcha.
Thank you, so I just wanted to point out that we went from charging approximately thousand dollars. For these two hundred meters every year to charging two hundred.
Right.
So even people who were paying for their own before are already getting a better deal and I think that's. That's really important to highlight too as part of this conversation is we did improve the service for everybody and. Um, I think that part has kind of gotten missed here.
Yeah, and and if I remember right, that's why we did that is because then then we put it back onto the owners of the. Of the landowners to decide if they wanted calcium or not, right? We give it for a, for a less of a cost. Counselor Gerlach.
Yeah, probably repetitious, but roads are built to be used. And one road may have a hundred vehicles a day, another one may have forty, but because ten or fifteen of them are going to a campground. Doesn't really promote any justification, the amount of money that's that's required is really quite minimal. And I I think the county is doing its share and um. I don't see any need for change.
Yes. Counselor Cromwell. Well, you're muted or something, you're not coming through.
Let me try that again.
Yep.
Good, thank you. I am not disagreeing that uh we did make things better for for the vast majority and I'm. Honestly, not saying we need to get campgrounds to start paying for it. But what I am saying is. I hear your people in the room talking about economic driver promoting small business. Then apply that to everybody, including our small trucking companies that have to go and use that road. Do not penalize one, but claim, you know, an economic driver for another. That is where where I have a bit of an issue with what's being said around the room. If we're gonna do it, we're going to be fair to everybody, not pick and choose who we're going to be fair to. I do support allowing them to purchase additional bits of. Of dust control. Of dust control. I I think that is a grand idea coming from the room. But again, I think we're. We're not missing it entirely. We're just, I don't think we're looking at it with equality and fairness to to those around. Your trucking company that might go once a week. But have to get a road use agreement for those five trips on Monday and doesn't go back for a week as opposed to. A log haul company that is out. Seven days a week, fifteen trips a day. We have to understand there's a difference and if we are. As we say we are in this room promoting an economic driver for a small business, we have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, but the the what you're talking about with the trucking company is not comparable to a, to a uh. Small vehicle traffic. That's that's, that's not even apples to apples. That's uh. You're just, yeah, I don't, I I I don't agree with that. Because you're covered underneath, you're covered underneath the road use agreement. Road use agreement can't, can't be interpolated into the dust control program. At all. It's it's uh, it's uh, it's two different entities, but. I I I'm on the same kind of wavelength. I I don't know. So if we were to amend this to add on extra. Be able to purchase extra uh dust control, is that just for the calcium or or are they gonna have to pay for everything? Like, like for the gravel, for the graders? Just the calcium.
Just the calcium, they're there anyway. And and on the, with the same logic that we don't build that other stuff because we're grading the road no matter what. Just pay full freight on the calcium and call it a day.
Yeah, I guess uh. Now we get into apples to oranges again. I don't know, I I'm I'm not even for for. Extending the amount of calcium they can buy because it's just gonna cause another, another reason for this. This policy to come back and uh. I don't know, I think we should run with this policy the same way, but that's my own point of view, but it's with with the amendment of. Consistent traffic, but so what do we want to do here?
I'll float the boat and see who uh continues to roll or who who wants to jump out. Um, how about we recommend to county council to bring policy thirty thirty-four oh five to a future meeting to enhance the parameters for resolution?
But they'd have to uh.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, totally.
Yeah, I didn't realize that there was a motion on here. So what was your motion?
To do what?
To add the the extra calcium purchases.
Recommend to council, county council to to bring back.
To add the addition.
Yeah, bring back the policy to the next county council meeting with with the added on addition of.
So we we've got, I mean, time constraints and we can look at ways to stretch this out to last six or eight weeks or months. But I'm wondering, can we just agree that we could ask administration to bring us back a revised version of the policy that allows this outcome? Direct to council so that we can make a decision in the timing that allows it to happen for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Or we can play games at the procedural bylaw.
Yeah. But that's what the emotion would say, recommend the county council, recommend to council. Or or recommend to county council or administration to bring back to county council a new policy. A revised policy to to add, to to add in um. The extension of the amount of calcium or buying extra calcium if required. If asked, right?
Can we have that motion read out as typed?
As typed.
If I may, do we have any way of sharing a screen that it could be?
We don't as of today. I think I responded that we're we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna have to write that down.
So to recommend to county council. The bring to bring back the revised policy of twenty, what's it? Thirty-four oh five with the addition um to have the availa- availability for. Residents to purchase extra calcium at cost.
Whatever it is, thirty-four oh five. I know.
So just clarification, Mr. Chairman, do you mean the new reduced cost or full cost? Full cost.
Okay, so we're we're talking equipment gravel or just just the product, dust control product?
Okay, so that's not, okay, I'm just, that's why I'm asking the clarification.
It'd be the full cost of the calcium.
Of just calcium, not the, right, okay, thank you. Not the way it used to be calculated, which was a lot higher, okay?
But now what happens if the person comes back after? And wants more?
Then they pay the extra fee, the late fee.
Plus the full cost of the calcium. That's a deterrent. Okay, so we got that motion on the floor to. Because if I gotta read it out. Ready? Sure, please.
Moved by Counselor Wallack to recommend to administration to bring back to county council. The revised policy of thirty-four oh five with the addition to the availability to purchase additional calcium at cost.
At cost.
And we have to bring this to council to pass this actually because we have to recommend. But it, that's not how it read. It was to recommend to county council to direct admin. Is that what it reads? Yes.
No, can we, can we get past this silliness?
It would be great.
That extends us another six weeks.
Here's the problem.
Get it done for, but no, we we have operated with general operating rules very comfortably for a number of years and now. Like, we don't have to vary from the operating norms. We can collectively agree to be productive and not waste time and. Or we can stall it by another, because now we're going to the first council meeting in February, which nothing will then happen till the last council meeting in February and the deadline is. February twenty eighth.
We would want to change our procedural bylaw to be able to do it differently.
Chair.
If if if. If we recommend it to to have this, this policy be brought back to the next county council meeting. That would be, could, well, no, that'll be a first, first meeting in February. That'll work, right?
Well, it'll work. I mean, we are working on the dust control program as we speak and they're, you know. Um, we'll be cutting her tight, um, but we we should have time to prepare notices to everyone from last year. It's just this, really, this amendment just makes it purely volunteer anyways. Like, we can't compel anyone to do it, if you know what I mean. So someone, um, a commercial entity could then apply on behalf then and take us up on that offer of the. Cost reduced for to, but. I don't think adding this wording would then automatically include campgrounds again. So. It's kind of a volunteer basis or voluntary basis if someone wanted to do it. So I'm not too sure how much it would be taken up the first year, but we'll see.
Holy man. So if we recommend this to the, not the next county council meeting, but. But to the county council meeting, first county council meeting in February, the new policy could be passed there. And could be in in stated for the extra calcium, right? Why not? Go ahead.
Oh, just as a point, the way that the motion reads is you're going to county council for their authorization to even ask admin to change it, so. I'm opposed to the motion because I don't think you would have the amended policy in place in time to meet the February deadline. It doesn't sound like council is unanimous or cohesive on this item, so. Rather than rushing that discussion at council, I think we should hold off for. The year.
We do have two meetings in February. So. Well, it's still possible, um. Even if we just choose to extend the deadline for a week, it's still possible to do that. Um, but we have, we are bound by our procedural bylaw. And I've had people comment to me, how can you make decisions in the committee of the whole? When your bylaw does not allow it, so uh we are bound, according to our council code of conduct, to follow our bylaws. That's the way they are. If we want committee of the whole to have full-on out. Authority as a county council meeting, then we need to change that in our bylaw.
Well, I guess, yeah. But can we not word the policy so it'll come back to that meeting in 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 February? The the revised policy that.
That was my recommend, that was my motion, was to have admin revise the policy so it comes back to council so we can approve it. If we can't do that here, what is the point of this meeting? Why are we sitting around for hours talking about anything?
That was the purpose of the committee of the whole was to be able to have open discussions. We were never allowed to have decisions here. If, again, if that is a decision of council and I'm sorry, but that's the technicality of it that I know that people don't like and it's easily fixed. Bring the procedural bylaw back and we'll correct it.
This is exactly when we got rid of our public works. That was our only other decision-making authority that we had. And that was, in my opinion, this was a hundred percent made for discussion.
Being in uh, yeah. And and. Yeah, we're just, we're just asking for this policy to be brought back into, we're missing our uh our next delegation by fifteen minutes already, so. So can we get through this where we can recommend, uh, recommend the county. Recommend to administration to bring back a revised policy to the February. Whatever the next county council meeting, first county council meeting in February. To be uh.
Ah, as worded, as the recording secretary worded it, um. Sorry to interrupt, I I have my hand up and y'all don't see me up here. You know, there's a lot to be said on this right now. But I I agree, we need to kind of move this up because we have a delegation waiting. Uh, we we tried to bring the procedural bylaw back for review and. And the majority in this room said that it was perfect, it didn't need to be changed. Well, apparently it does. I think the Counselor Wallack's motion. Uh, to bring it back, though. Kind of jumping ahead by getting the the policy written for the time. It is very valid, but again, we are bound by a code of conduct and a procedural bylaw. That we did not want to change recently.
So can we, can can. Uh, would it be reasonable then to make a motion to suspend the rules, which can be made at any time and takes precedent over any motion if it is. For the purpose connected with that motion. It's a non-debatable motion that requires two-thirds vote and would allow us to suspend that rule for the purpose of passing the motion. That Counselor Wallack has made.
Which is in Robert's rules, uh, of order you're referring to?
Yep.
Yeah.
But that's, does that apply to a committee that does not have authority?
It's just suspend that rule.
I understand that, but being that this committee does not have authority, does it have the authority to suspend a rule? For such a thing that it normally does not have any authority to have authority over. I know my wording's not right, but you understand what I'm getting at.
No, I believe you are correct, Counselor Cromwell. Um, again, we do not have authority in this particular uh meeting. We do not. So we cannot act as council to pass motions that are not recommended to county council. Um, that's, that's what it is.
Would you point out the legislative reference for that, please?
We have it in our procedural bylaw.
I can pull out the procedural bylaw. You can read about it in the commi- in the uh.
Go ahead, Gary.
Chairman, um, with all due respect, maybe we should um. Hear our delegation that was scheduled for one o'clock and maybe we could get back to this following that session.
We'll table this.
Is that fair?
Yeah, we'll table this uh discussion until after uh, after our our uh next delegation.
And that was a legal matter and we recommended it go closed session.
Yeah, you betcha, and we need to go into close. I need a motion for close.
So made.
What's that? Table, motion to table.
Yep.
Counselor Wallack. All in favor? Counselor Chamsik, motion to go in closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. What's the, what's the meeting, February, what?
I don't know if anyone's talking, but nobody has a microphone on.
Yeah, yeah, I got mine on. Um, okay, so we're we're reconvening the meeting. And to go back to the table item six point two regarding the dust control program, we got a. There's a motion on the floor. Can you read it or do you want me to kind of hammer through it?
So I don't know if you want me to have moved by Counselor Wallack. Okay, so moved by Counselor Wallack that the community of the whole to recommend to county council to bring back a revised policy thirty-four oh five. To county council on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five with the addition to have the availability to purchase additional calcium at cost.
May I, yep, when we ask for the um. Uh, additional calcium to be dust control product, so we're not tied to calcium only in the future.
Control product?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, are we to assume these are friendly amendments?
Right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, do we need to have this reread or can we just vote on it? Counselor Gerlock, are you okay to?
I would recommend, Richard, that you read it so that the council knows who's voting on it.
Okay, can we have the motion reread, please?
Moved by Counselor Wallack that the committee of the whole. That the committee of the whole recommend to county council to bring back the revised policy thirty-four oh five to county council on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. With the addition to have the availability to purchase additional dust control product at cost.
All in favor? Post? That's uh four, five, five and three. Carried. I know, he voted against it too and then. Oh. Okay, so. Okay, so.
I can leave one off and leave it till the next time, but there's one. I have one motion.
Okay. We all in wants to make a motion.
And that would be to recommend to council to update policy three four zero nine in pursuant to policy three four zero five.
Three four zero nine.
And if for background information, uh, three four zero nine is dust control on gravel haul roads. And it references policy three four zero six that is rescinded, therefore just to update it to the current policy.
All okay with that?
I mean, most of us haven't seen, uh, the information on this, so I'll be voting opposed just because I haven't been able to see it in advance.
Um, if we could, we could bring it to, like, again, it's a recommendation to council. For that update, so it would come to.
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, is. Three four oh nine refers to a policy three four oh six, which was rescinded.
Right.
And the actual, you just want one, one number changed in three or four oh nine, so it refers to policy three four oh five. It's a typo. That you would. It's an old one. It's.
Yeah, I can't see anything. Nothing's changing in the policy. It's just a number. Right?
Right, it. Three four oh nine, Mr. Chairman, refers to a policy which doesn't exist anymore.
Right.
Correct. Three four oh six was rescinded when we adopted three four oh five. So we just didn't update the other policy with the new policy number.
Right.
Mr. Chair, uh, through you to the admin, wouldn't it not be normal practice for admin to just? To automatically make the updates like that with a successor policy like those are. Such a basic level of housekeeping. I hate to think that you would have to write up a. Decision report for council. Is, is it not normal practice to just take successor policies and update them, flush them through?
It absolutely is. Um, councillor Hall, um, there's a motion on the floor. Honestly, we. In the interest of good governance, we, we got no problem making this correction and bringing it forward.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. So all in favor? Opposed? So that's six and two. Right? Five and two? What am I missing here? Who is? Five and three? Oh. Okay, five and three. Motion's carried. So, okay. Let's go home. Let's go to water rates. Six point three. Do we need a convenience break? We got six point three. And. Need a break? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to six point three. And water rates, so. Who wants to take that one on? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for your report, um, here, CEO Beck. Um, as you mentioned, essential questions of council, there are two essential questions that council needs to determine before we can move forward. Um, the first one being this council wish to remove away from a cost recovery model of utility rates to a subsidized model. And two, what is the level of subsidization of water rates that council would like to be at? One example be, uh, so that our water rates are lower than our urban neighbors. So if, if it's okay with council, I'll just throw my opinion out there as in yes, uh, to number one. That, um, we look at, uh. I guess our utility rates, um, being as a subsidized model, I guess is the way to put it, whereas. Uh, if we have any sharp for shortfalls in revenue that it would come out of the general, uh, taxation is where I sit there. And two, uh, what is the level, um, of subsidization? So definitely. Um, that we are either comparable as in equal to or lower than our urban neighbors. Um, I'm very much, uh, in favor of that. Um, again, with any revenue shortfalls that it come out of general taxation and that, um. We have to consider rescinding bylaws zero one one dash twenty twenty and zero one four dash twenty twenty. As those are, uh, old bylaws that are still sitting as active that, um, do not. As far as I understand, do not apply to any of our current bylaw with regards to water rates, uh, and sewer rates. Um, and the other thing I would like to, for council, um, if their wish to consider, um, is to lowering the minimum. As we look at our neighbors, uh, we end up with, I believe, um, it's two and a half cubes per month for the town. And Boyle has a distribution fee that they, uh, charge. As being, uh, fifteen dollars a month, which would be according to their rate, which is four ninety nine a cube would be almost three cubes minimum. If you kind of look at it as a minimum rather than a distribution charge. So a couple of those things that. Um. Would, I would really like to have that conversation, but that's where I sit with the answers for those couple of questions until we get into further discussion.
Okay, uh, councillor Hall. Uh, your mic there, buddy.
Thank you. Thanks for that reminder. I. Even though I think, you know, when we made the decision, council made the best decision. We could, given the advice we had, I, I'm of the view that we did miss the mark on, um. The changes that we made previously to water rates and, and so I would still support a cost recovery model. Uh, for high volume users, I really, uh, believe we should consider, like some of my colleagues. A reasonable subsidized amount on a reasonable quantity of water for county residents. And for their domestic use. And to me, it's critical that we're subsidizing residents and domestic use. Um. Uh, and to help make cost of living more affordable across the region. I've taken to heart advice from the CIO that we subsidize many things and, and, um. Uh, on residential use, having a bit of a subsidy for water seems reasonable. Uh, I do not support subsidizing water for industry. Or for, uh, non-residents, and I think there's some. Some mechanical pieces that we'd have to figure out for how do we? How do we do that? Um, I, I think. Asking administration to give us some, their best advice on the minimum would be prudent. What, what should that be? Um, we know our neighbors have flat rates and other stuff and. I don't think we have to, should set our mark sort of tied to the others, but set something that's right for us and that number might be. Something it is just lower than. Other places or, or a number we think is reasonable. Look, the system does have some cost to operate and we have to recognize that, but. Um, on some reasonable quantity of water for, for Athabasca County residents. So that means not coin op, not. Um, I could get behind. A lower rate supported by research from administration. And I think, given all the other. Cost increases and, and, uh, things we see, um, we need to. To write. We need, we need to make right on this adjustment that we, uh, we've made and, and bring it down for domestic use.
Thank you. I totally agree with that. Um, councillor. Cromwell.
Thank you. In one of those days that I write down on my calendar, I agree with councillor Hall. And he had many of the words that I wanted to use, um. We. First off, let me be clear, the, I. I have yet to be able to. Get behind or understand how it costs us more money. To get the water down the pipe. Than it does for the commission to make water for Grouse on and wandering river. Our, our cost is higher just to go through a water for life primarily funded pipe. Then. Than anything else, um. I agree that we need to subsidize water rates for county residents and I've actually brought that up before as an idea that. We have a different rate for non-residents. Um. I agree that industry, um, aside from our water hauling companies who are often. Hauling on behalf of county residents should not be paying a subsidized rate. Uh, I agree that our minimums need to be lowered. I was thinking. And I believe in our, our discussion before around five cubic meter. Um. We could go lower. Uh, I would be happy going from ten to five cubic meters for a minimum water rate. But I would like to see water. Uh, you know, at no more than five dollars a cube. Across the county. I think that is more than reasonable. You know, we have been given cost by previous director of how much money our, our water system is taking. And then in discussion, well, where did you get that number? How did you figure that? We, we were unable to get real answers. We were unable to know where. The cost is coming from. I, in, in all fairness to administration who took this on with new staff. Thing that we have written for water rates is probably not accurate. When you literally dissect every line I've been figuring out where our rates are coming from. I have a very hard time with that. So I'm, I'm very happy that. We are looking at being fair. And we're, we're looking at helping our county residents. We are looking at lowering that rate. We're talking about lowering the minimum that they have to get. While. Our non. Users. Pay that bit of a premium for being out here, that little bit extra for, for the corporations that are, are making money versus. Joe Ratepayer. Who's out there. I, I think we're, we're definitely on the right track and I'm very happy that we're having this conversation.
Okay, uh, thanks for that, uh, councillor Walk.
Um, I'm not for subsidizing. I think we should have a minimum cost repair or recovery because we have infrastructure that we have to pay for. We, we have to look ahead to the future and. Understand that we're in positions we are now because the council at the time didn't take that. Step to put money away. For reserves. Let's be honest. Um. So I, I don't think we should have, um, a subsidization. I think we need more information on what our actual costs are. Um, to come back and what the actual usage is. On average for prefer people. So if it is five cubes, cool, let's make that the minimum. If it's ten, then we make ten. If that's the average across the board, um, I think we need to know the stats and not just assume. Um, what we think we know. Um, I would like to see some more actual numbers come before we make this decision.
Just to give you an answer to a question ahead of council, huh? Are we following the? In a, in a building that I know of, a, a single person and a, another person who are, is only there about half the time. Their average is about seven and a half cubes a month.
Yep, um. Actually, our reserve sitting in capital for water equipment and lines, um, at the end of, uh, this is, um. End of twenty twenty four, I guess, um, with the move that we made of the hundred and fifty six thousand, six hundred and twenty seven. According to this that we received from administration, we're sitting at one million, nine hundred forty three thousand, nine hundred twenty five dollars and fifty cents. In capital reserves.
Okay, so our new water line costs us sixteen million dollars. What are we gonna do when we have to replace everything?
I don't think we have to replace a whole water line all at once. Um, that's, I don't think that's something that has ever really that I know of. Um, has, um. I don't think that we would ever do. I think we would do the proper maintenance that we would avoid to degrade so bad that we would have to replace the whole line all at once. So I, I kind of, I'm wondering what is a proper amount for, uh, a reserve cap. On, uh, water equipment and lines as we are, uh. Aggressively adding to the reserves every year. We had, I think it was forty two thousand, jumped to sixty six thousand. Now jumping to a hundred and seven thousand, which all increases the costs of, uh, per cube. Um, we're also have been including in the cost, uh, depreciation. Uh, where our depreciation, it may show up in our expense column under that particular, uh, water, uh. Expenditure, uh, statement, but when you go back to your summary, it is put right back in. So for me, where I too want to see, see the costs, uh, I did pull up, uh, from twenty twenty three, March fourteen. When, uh, we were given some information, uh, from the previous director on a seven year average. And so as I broke down where those figures came from, I was able to apply them to twenty three and twenty four. And for, and again, this is just my figures. This isn't from administration or anything of the sort. But when you look at our cost for twenty twenty three, being that we had a surplus. Our cost, um, without depreciation is two dollars and sixty six. Two point six six three five plus the cost it would be from, um, the commission. So add another four bucks to that. And then again, when we look at it from twenty twenty four, just the budget, I don't have the actuals. Just the budget, uh, the county cost would have been three point six one one one. So for me, we are definitely have room to move down in what our, uh, cost recovery is. As well as if we were to add in that if there's a shortfall in revenues, that it be covered through general taxation. That wouldn't impact taxation. It would be so minimal, you wouldn't even know it existed. So to be able to properly, um, and fairly, I guess, charge people for water across the county. Um, lowering the cost would be very easily done. Uh, the minimum would also be easily done. It would just have to be something that we, we talked about. Um, to figure out where we want to be. Again, the town two and a half and, and, um. Boyle, we can equate it to three cubes a month. Um. And the other elephant in the room, whether we like it or not, but our current, uh, Collington levy. Is tied to that water rate in the minimums. So in our water rate bylaw. So if we mess with the minimums and. We've got to be considering how we're going to handle that situation. And also to make sure that people understand with regards, because the levy is, is sitting here in, in our agenda. That it's not only impacted the water rates, it's impacted the sewer rates. Because they're paying less than what everyone else is. So we're subsidizing Collington in to a degree already, um. And with water and sewer. So there's, there's quite a few things that I would really like to see come back as well. Um, and, and as mentioned, you know, we need to provide some examples to administration as to how we would like that to, to look. Um, I don't know if we can narrow it down to or three different. Uh, calculations we'd like for administration to bring back. Um. I don't know where everyone else is sitting, but I definitely see. A drop would be a great thing.
I know when we, we discussed this before, uh, regarding our utility, water rate, utility bylaw. It came back with, with about three different scenarios. Would administration be, be? I guess, up to bringing back? A few different scenarios of, of different water rates or. Do you have enough information to, to bring something back or we'd like to see the minimum dropped and, and, uh. I guess we need a number on, on, on how much you want to subsidize or if we can get as close to cost recovery as we can. How? What's, what's, what's administration's point of view on that?
Well, I'm, I'm happy to go there, Mr. Chairman, um. I'm not hearing a whole lot of consensus on the issue so far, sorry, but. Um, and that's the point. I mean, we could go away, but we're gonna be, i- if council. If we go away and work on these scenarios, now we could just dredge up those ones that were prepared before. That's very easy. Um. But we want to make it worth everyone's time. Um, if we're not sure that. A majority of the committee, which is council recommending to council, wants to see that, then.
Well, I know myself, when I look at all the, all the scenarios from, from, that was given to us in this package. Every municipality has a lower, uh, lower minimum rate. They have a lower minimum rate, whether they do it by, by, uh, uh. Just a charge, just a flat charge of twenty eight bucks, thirty bucks, whatever, and then, and then, uh. And then you pay for the water that you use. And, and, and I would. I would be okay myself with dropping the minimum rate and then. We've got to read the, we read the meters anyway. So if you, if you. If you get a, uh, let's say a, a, a minimum rate of, of four cubic meters. Let's say, whether you're there or not, it's gonna cost you minimum four cubes. And then that'll, and then you pay for whatever water you use beyond that. That should be enough of a deterrent to get the heck out of the shower. And, and, and quit using so much water, right? Because you're paying for it anyway. So. So, uh, um, that's the way I look at it. Drop the minimum and, and. It'll be a, a lot easier to, it'll, it'll drop the rates. Councillor Wallack?
Uh, like I said, for, we're making a lot of assumptions here. Um, I would like to see the numbers come back of what the. Uh, like I said, for we're making a lot of assumptions here. Um, I would like to see the numbers come back of what the actual costs are for our water. And then what the average use, average cubes per household is. And then secondly, like, how do we determine industrial use? So like, commercial use, like car washes and hotels. Are we subsidizing them? Is that what we're looking at? Or like, how like, how do we determine that?
So we've, we've talked a lot about minimum. And maybe, maybe we're looking at it from the wrong perspective. If we're trying to. Provide a discount to 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 the domestic users. Perhaps there is a flat rate for the folks who have a meter that needs reading and. Something like that reflects the the baked in, some something to help with the baked in costs of media reading. But what about instead of a minimum? You set a maximum at the discounted rate. So rather than saying you must buy or will charge you for five to ten cubes. What if we said the first ten cubes of water are at this discount? And set it a number that's big enough to encompass, you know, most families of four or five. And then anything over that goes at a higher rate. And that way. You don't have. You can, you can get around the the industry's charges and the, cause even if we give industry the first ten cubes at the bargain rate. The guys that are heavy users. That's where you start to pay. And that way, if I wanna. Water my cattle from the truck fill station. I can just pay the higher, higher rate and. We we end up being able to provide every rate payer a uniform rate that that's at a discount up to a certain quantity of water. And then after that, it goes to a higher rate and and you. Get away from a bunch of administrative hassle.
So just for. An example, thank you, I was looking for the word. I have a family of five. With three young children, we use about twelve to thirteen cubes in an average month. So just as a number out there. Uh, that I can tell you. So I, like I said, I thought uh, the first ten cubes. Would be more than fair. Uh, that definitely encompasses a lot of people that don't have the uh. The water use of three young children.
If I may, I I and I appreciate what you're saying, uh, when it comes to having, you know, a tiered system, it's great in an urban situation. But the town has it. Um, so the town, for example, eight up to eighteen cubic meters, it's five point three, seven, six. And then after eighteen point one, it jumps to five point five, three, and over forty five jumps to six point oh nine. So what I look at as a cistern operator that has water delivered. Um, they're delivering just under fifteen cubes, um, that's stretched out over two months. So how does that work? Um, when you have, you know. You're not gonna ask for half loads, right? That's gonna cost you a fortune. So for me, I struggle with. Having a a tiered rate in a rural setting, being that when cistern users have their water trucked in it, how would it apply? Uh, it would be very different. So it'd be very difficult for me to figure out where that, how that would work. Um, I don't know in the accounts that we have set up currently and how when they go in and punch in their number. Um, you know, the first ten are at this and then the next five will, it's it's unfair to to residents who live early. Um, I guess if if we wanna throw some scenarios out there of of what we would like for um, administration to come back with. I guess it would be, as you mentioned, we need to know what our costs are, right? We need to know what that looks like. Um, I would ask that depreciation come out of that cost, being that it zeroed out on the other end anyway. Um, of course, uh, reserves are included in that cost. Um, I would like to see personally our reserves drop a little bit, cause it's uh. Uh, until we know what's a decent cap, um, I think that they are a little bit excessive. Um, I would even recommend dropping twenty twenty four's budgeted amounts, but that's another story. Um, I would say that for me, I would like to see the rate no higher than our neighbors. Um, I believe the highest rate is five point. Three, seven, six, and Boyle is four point nine, nine. So I would like to see something in between those two rates. Um, I would like to see a minimum. This is just like I say, me personally, just throwing stuff out there just to give us a scenario that we can work with. Uh, I would like to see a minimum of of three cubes. That matches boils. Or and or instead of a minimum, it'd be a distribution charge um, that we can. We don't tie minimums to anything. It's just a distribution charge. When you get it, you get it. But again, it, how does that impact? Somebody at a truck fill, right? So we still run into that situation, right? Um, so there's that aspect of it and um. Yeah, I don't know if there's anything much more other than that if there's a uh, revenue loss that we look at it through the um, general taxation. To make up the difference, so. Pretty much what we have, only just a lot lower rates and a lot lower minimum. And except it's it's subsidized through uh, general taxation for. Revenue loss.
Okay, Councilor Jones.
Pretty much everything. I feel is said, like you said, you said you have, we have a huge amount of reserves there. I am definitely for subsidized uh, uh, model for sure. Um. And to counsel, we need to see that math and how it all plays out, first of all. And then I think, you know, when administration can bring some. Real hard plausible solutions and I agree with a three, maybe four cube minimum as well.
Councilor Hall.
If we, if we get back to, like, before we start arguing positions, what are we really trying to accomplish? And it seems like to me there's consensus around the table that we, we want to get better rates for the typical domestic user. And if we're, if we start off without its fetish, then we have to get into the, well, how do we do it? And how do we deliver that better rate to them? And but I I. I think. You know, in terms of what, what research do we want admin to get? I think I've heard we wanna. No costs. I'd like to know costs with and without depreciation, cause I I do have a different view. I think we, we need to maintain reserves because we. A million bucks is nothing. It's diddly squat on our scale. And so. At least we need to talk, have some advice from admin on that. They may recommend. We we go for a little more, a little less. I know the Water Commission has just done. You know, uh, many uh, thick volumes of. Uh, reports on the condition of our our water lines across the county and, you know, where we might expect. Work to be needed in the future. So we can, we can have a reserve study built out of that. I I think it would be helpful to know kind of what is the typical use as well. And admin is the best position to tell us that. And then. You know, around the table, we can decide, maybe we do wanna round up. Maybe we wanna round it up to fifteen. Cause at some point, it just becomes a political decision about. How much do you wanna subsidize? And we, if we say we wanna subsidize the first fifteen cubes a month. Then we we can make that, but I, but you know, the foundation, I think, is we have consensus that we want better rates. I, I mean, my. My view is that. Um, I I'm not even sure that I like the minimum amount. The distribution charge is fine, cause. Someone in a truck fill will pay it, but someone with a, you know, a meter and all of that can pay that and it doesn't have to be crazy, but the. The bigger piece is, how do you design a system that's simple? Uh, relatively easy to administer and doesn't involve lots of complicated calculations. And that's why I say flipping it to a maximum might actually be. More straightforward where your bill just, the first, you know, pick the number fifteen. Five, twenty, whatever, is at some bargain. And then once you cross the threshold. And that way, you know, the folks who are heavy duty water users, they, they too are potentially residents. I, I can. I think it's supportable to subsidize that little bit. It's really the the guys that are using twenty and thirty thousand cubes a month. That that I can be prepared to go to a rate payer and say. You know, we're, we're subsidizing. Buddy, you know, somebody's water hauling to an oil field camp. Because my guess is they're not discounting the rate to the, to the oil field camp when they charge it. So anyway. That foundational level first, and then then how do we get there? And that's the, I mean, there's probably a couple of different views on how we get to that thing, but.
That's, that's the hardest part of this is cause we are rural. What's happening is is when you look at our urban neighbors. They, they subsidize the water to all their people that they, that they provide water for. And. They stick it to their uh, uh, bulk water sales. And and. Both urban neighbors do that. And and uh, that's, and and they can do that because. If you don't wanna pick up water from them, go someplace else, get the water someplace else. We, we fifty one percent of our water goes through that we sell goes through the the bulk water. And and and. I really don't, a lot of that water is actually going to people's places. It's it's going to rural places. It's not, it's not going to camps, it's not, not going to uh, uh. And and also agricultural use, huge amount. Yeah, but they are taxpayers too. They 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 need that water for spring. So it's not like they're they're, it's going to commercial. They they need that water for spring. It's a, it's a, it's a fact. So. That's where the difficulty is. How do we subsidize water going into our hamlets and and still subsidize water going into? For our rural use, because fifty one percent of that is going. Through rural use. And 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 I I I don't know how to do it. Councilor Grumel, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, you know. Again, I. I can almost agree with Counselor Hall that maybe doing a, a maximum would be. A very smart way to go, but my question through the chair to administration. When we're talking truck though, which is. Like the chair said, the majority of our water sale. You can tell from their billing whether they're local or non-local, is that correct?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman, if they set up an account, yes.
So, so right there. That that actually works. So if you have a a local billing address and you know that your. Box number one, two, three, four. In in Rochester, box two, three, four in Grassland, box three, four, five in Wandering River. That you're local. Well, then you get a discounted rate. If your billing address is Fort McMurray, St. Albert. Edmonton. Well, obviously, you're, you're not a local here. And we can make that work. It is definitely something that we can do with ease. You, if you don't have an account and you're paying coin, you pay a higher rate. If you're local, you get an account.
Councilor Gerlock.
Don't forget my address is a Boyle address. I am a county resident.
Councilor Gerlock.
I don't know, like, I don't know why we're so worried about uh, about possibly subsidizing industry or whatever. Uh, we. Aren't shy or we don't have to be shy when we're tapping them for. Uh, for to for taxes, uh, on the. The M and E and 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 whatever, we. I mean, we're thirty percent below our neighbor in Lacklavish, who have doubly assessed what we do. If we're worried about subsidizing water, let's just touch him for a little, little bit more money. But how do we, how does that? A car wash running grassland or the hotel where they said their water bill is fourteen thousand a month or something? Like. Is that, that's. How do we create anything? How do we have anything work? This thing is water for life. It's, it's water for life, which means it's kind of more important. I'm sure that the multiplex will collapse long before the water line uh, does. Uh, and and you know, it's like, I don't buy a new tractor today and tomorrow I start saving for the next one. Uh, usually when these things are near the end of their life. In the latter years, you prepare for it, you take it to venture and and you pay for it over so many years. Or you get help from the government with grants. If it's sixty million dollars, we're not gonna build a new water line and shell out sixty million dollars right away. I don't think that's, just doesn't work that way.
So, uh, if if nobody else caught it in the presentation, they do two thousand rooms a month. At that. Hotel. So it's a lot of water that they're using and they're making money. Uh, secondly, um, I I always go back to the the service level, um. Uh, thing we did with me and Rob, uh, went to one. And there was a town that they planned for twenty five years to do one street a year and replace the water line and the sewer line and repave. We have water lines, sewer lines of pavement in our hamlets that are old. And that's gonna cost more than a million dollars. We have to consider that. So either we start coming up with a twenty five year plan to start replacing that, because that water line is what, twenty years old? At least. So it's gonna start happening and it's gonna cost us a lot of money. We're at that end of life. Cycle with the water lines at a lot of these hamlets, like, we have to start thinking about that stuff.
Um, just with regards to, as you mentioned with industry, um, as you mentioned, they, we are able to gain back what they're paying. For the heavy taxes that they pay for commercial. Um, commercial pays a higher rate. Um, we are supposed to be attracting business here, not saying, oh, it's too difficult to do business here. And this is the problem that that I'm seeing. Grassland was has made it very clear. It is extremely difficult to do business here. It's extremely difficult to invite people and expand business because of the cost to do business. We shouldn't have that problem. We have, we gave a subsidy to our small businesses. Why can we not make sure that our large businesses are given some sort of a break as well? And for me, um, yes, they may be making money. That's great. That means then that we we have a good business in our community. We shouldn't be making it more difficult for them. And yes, I agree that, yeah, we need a plan to make um, uh. Changes and and upgrades and all of those things to to our water lines. Um, but we wouldn't do it all in one year. It wouldn't happen. And so that's where we have, as you mentioned, a plan is a great idea. But as far as uh, industry camps is an, is another example, those are still people that require potable water. You know, we cannot make it so we're saying, hey, you know, just cause you don't live here, we're just gonna make your life miserable. That's, I I don't agree with that at all.
Well, I guess the biggest thing is is if I could cut in here just for a second, we need to come up with something to give to administration to say to come back with. Uh, probably to the next committee of the whole. Regarding water rates. What, what do we want to give to administration to come back with some information? Cause this could go on until six o'clock tonight. Uh, saying that, yes, we wanna drop their water rates, but we don't wanna do it by this and by that. We need, we need to come up with a consensus here. Councilor Charles.
Are we not also waiting for a big infrastructure master plan, including all of that kind of stuff like?
You mean the level of service?
Sorry, the, are we expecting an infrastructure master plan that would encompass underground services?
Have we started it? I'm not aware of anything that's been started and. You know, my Saturdays and Sundays are open, but you know.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, here's what I heard.
Okay, thank you.
Here's what I heard. And if I didn't get anything back, I would. I would try to bring back something like this. Council would like to see. Maybe the true cost for twenty twenty five, as if you're developing a a utility model from scratch. You wouldn't mind seeing that.
True cost, yeah.
True cost.
Give us a true cost, give us the.
True, yeah. Minimums, you uh, you'd uh, you'd like to examine minimums, maybe ten boxes too mu- or ten cubes is too much. So you'd like to examine that. You might wanna examine maximums, but I get a different one of industrial truck fill rates. This is not too complicated. Mr. Chairman, Lacklavish County does it today. And you can see it, and I think I tapped their utility rate, so they've got it figured out. So we just have to phone, phone them. And how did you guys do it? This is not rocket science. Um, reserves, what are reserves? What would they be? I don't know, we'd have to, we don't have a full plan for this, so we'd have to just. For now, you'd have to just pick a comfort level and say this is what we're working towards, but we're not, it's not gonna be based on science. That's, that's for sure. Um, you wanted to know the typical user.
Yeah, how much a typical user uses.
Yep, typical user.
Yeah.
And then maybe present us three scenarios. With varying levels of subsidy for council to have a look at. Maybe one includes the minimum, maybe one doesn't. At least you've got some straw models that you can pick apart. Maybe council could narrow it down to one or two or something and then play with those.
Right.
Is that? Is that okay for a start?
Yep. And then, and I don't wanna bring it up, but what about the commercial? So a commercial, meaning like, like commercial in the hamlets. Not the commercial hauling, hauling to a rig camp or whatever. Not the commercial hauling, hauling to a rig camp or whatever, uh, commercial in the hamlets, like, like for the or the, the Ramadas and, uh, and the car washes and that. Is there a commercial way of doing that?
Some, some of that I think is around the, the policy level. What do we, what, what are we trying to accomplish? What are we trying to do? And if we give everybody, you know, base, like, figure out what we want to accomplish first, and then we can.
Okay.
Just, because, you know, in with that, it's, do we want to charge ag different? Like ag and industry, non-residential, like there's all those.
Okay, we can discuss that after. Sure. That, that sounds great to me. If, if we could get some of those numbers like that, and then, and then we could sit down at another committee of the whole meeting and, and, uh, when, when would you want to presumably have that done by? So we're not throwing you over.
Twenty twenty-eight? Sorry. Um, you know, we'll see what we can do for February, but.
Yeah, Fe- February, March.
Do we have the infrastructure? Like, as you think through, here's an idea for council. I guess for me, one of the questions would come back is, do we have the infrastructure to make that happen? So if you say, well, uh, the billing will be based on a pin pad number that you type in your account number, whatever. If we don't have that equipment at all the fills, like.
No, I mean, uh, Ms. Chairman, it's a great point. We just had that discussion again yesterday or today. Uh, no. Uh, the days are blurring, um, like, we have to get away from coin fills, so we do have to move towards, uh, pin pad and account system or a P, uh, point to sale. Um, we've got issues. And, uh, so, uh, that we, we really need to address. They're all doable, because I believe we have communication at each truck fill because of SCADA.
Yeah.
So it's all, it's all doable, but this, these things are overdue. Like, most people have gotten way away from, uh, coin op. They're just, you're just asking for trouble, Mr. Chairman. So the question of technology and other things, yes, it's absolutely linked. So Counselor Hall makes an excellent point. Um, I just want to, you know, looking at our budget, remember that total expenses are around nine hundred thousand or nine, I think we had it a little higher this year, nine sixty. So if you were talking about a ten percent subsidy, it's only ninety-six thousand dollars. If you're talking about a twenty percent subsidy, it's double that. We're not talking millions and millions of dollars. It's, I think it's the, it's the point of it, but in true dollars, um, it's not a huge number, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Uh, that's good. And, and we're just trying to make it fair. That's the only thing. So Counselor Gerlock.
And the thing is that it's an absolute need. There's no question about it, but it's an absolute need that has to be provided. And the one thing I would like to see in there also, like, do we have a uniform price now? I'm so confused with where this has gone. Do we have the same price in Wandering River as we do everywhere else and?
Well, with taxes, with the, with that tax levy, it just messes it up in Collington.
Cause we should have a uniform, we should have a uniform price.
Yeah, currently our uniform price is not uniform. Uh, we wanted a uniform price, but it didn't end up that way. So when with Collington, it's, uh, three twenty a cubic meter for ten cubic meters. And the rest of everyone else is five thirteen a cubic meter. And ten cubic meters is the minimum. That minimum is tied to the levy. So what that does is it zeroes out the Collington levy, which is why it's the discounted rate. It's to zero out the levy. Not only does it zero out the levy, our sewer rates are based on thirty-five percent of your water bill. Hmm, I think it's thirty-five. I'd have to dig deeper.
It's lower than that down in Rochester.
But, yeah, it is lower in Rochester. Um, so basically, yes, here it is, thirty-five percent of the actual monthly water billing. So when we have a discounted rate in Collington, it also discounts their sewer. Whereas Grassland and Wandering River don't have that. So by removing the levy, it puts everyone else back on an even
Can we focus back on that? I, I just, I worry that we're going to get off track when we get into the levy.
Well, the levy is part of the, of the agenda. And I know it's a, it's a contentious subject, but for understanding purposes, not only will the changing the minimum impact the discount to zero out the levy, if we just get rid of the levy, it zeros everything out. Everybody's on the same playing field, but that's an answer to your question.
Okay, so administration has, has given us, uh, an idea of what they can bring back. And um, February, March, sound okay? Is this going to be long, Counselor Cromo? Cause we've got to move on here, buddy.
Nope, not long at all. Just, uh, to Counselor Gerlock, when we were talking about the different rates there, I just opened it up here. Um, yeah, so when you're talking Grassland and Wandering River, we pay that Aspen rate plus an additional five thirteen a cubic meter, putting water for residents that rely on a truck fill at nine dollars a cube right now, just for that to be in comparison.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that was discussed already. So you betcha. Okay, and then so, so do we need a motion to, to bring that back? See you back? You'll, you'll just bring it back?
No, Mr. Chairman, we'll bring it back.
Okay, perfect. We will need a remote, uh, uh, a motion to rescind bylaws, uh, fourteen dash twenty twenty and bylaw eleven dash twenty twenty.
And if I may, those are, uh, I just think they got missed in the last cleanup. When we were rescinding all the old bylaws under the water rates, there's one that refers to, um, a discount long time ago that probably don't have any outs, out, uh, overdue accounts. So I don't think it would impact it. Um, but yeah, those are just two old ones, just to recommend to county council, um, to have those rescinded.
And can we make a, can this come back as a, with a copy of the bylaws? I just really am troubled to be asked to vote on rescinding a bylaw that's not in front of me.
That's right.
I don't, I don't object to doing it. I just, I want to see it. And, and it's, so let's get it back to committee the whole first, not.
Well, we can actually, if we can recommend to county council, we can look at it right in the council meeting and, and have that um, over and done without having to bring it back to another committee of the whole to now do another recommendation. So if we recommend it to county council, you'll be able to review it at that time. It's just a recommendation. It's not something that we would do until council decides.
It's. Okay, so you want to make the motion to recommend to county, we need a whole rec, counselor, or Reeve Holland uh, recommends the committee of the whole
recommends to come.
Recommends the county council to rescind bylaw zero eleven twenty twenty and zero fourteen twenty twenty at the February.
An upcoming meeting, it's not.
Yeah, an upcoming meeting of, of county council. Sound good? Okay. Do we need to reread that again? Okay. All in favor? Six, opposed? Six and one, motion, motion carried. No. Were you, were you opposed, Counselor Cromo?
I was in favor, sir, if I didn't.
Okay, yeah, that's what I figured. Six and, six and one.
Thank you.
Okay, and the information with the administration is they'll bring that back. So we're good there. Moving on to seven point one. Fire rescue standards, operating procedures, SOP policy. Forward the draft fire services standard operating procedure. So uh, Counselor Chamsik.
As recommended, please.
As recommended? Recommendation to forward the draft fire services standard operating procedures SOP policy to the up and coming regular county council meeting for approval and forward policy ninety-one, ninety-one oh two, fire rescue standard operating procedures SOP policy to an up and coming regular county council meeting to be rescinded with the current standard operating guidelines being transitioned from the policy to directives. Okay, do you want me to reread that again? Yeah, and, uh, so, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Oh, you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay, so that would be, uh, six and one. Motion, uh, recommended motion passed. Moving on to seven point two. This is the, uh, the survey from RMA. And Counselor Anderson, uh, too bad she wasn't still here, but, but, uh, understanding this has gone long enough. Um, that, that, uh, so do we want to, I think what was going to be asked is, do we want to do this survey as council, or do we want to do it member by member? Or do we want to do it both? And we can do it either or. Yeah. You just gotta, you just gotta put into the, uh, survey question if you're a member of, uh, you're, uh, doing it on your own, or if you're doing it for, on behalf of the municipality. What do we want to do?
Well, if we want to save time, everybody can just do their own if they choose to, um, to, to respond.
Does administration?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I would think having counselors do it themselves is actually more impactful than trying to do it as a group. It is. I mean, you actually get, you get nine votes on the topic instead of one.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Okay, that's a, that works for me. We could do this from home. And, and that, so, okay, on that note, I think, uh, if all the business has been taken care of, I don't think we have any other motions to push in there. Meeting adjourned.
Have a great day, everyone.
Thanks a lot.